All right, I'm calling this meeting of the Prattville Planning Commission to order. Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie. Councilman Heineman. No, I'm sorry, White side. Chairman Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner. Chief Johnson. Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Heineman. Mr. McAllie.
Here.
And Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Thank you. We do not have any old business in our new business here. We do have a public hearing on the Horace Davis property. The way I like to do things is to get the petitioner up here and tell us what they are proposing, so everybody knows what's gonna happen. Mr. Gillen, can you come tell us? And you can show the residents what's happening, and I think we got our copy. We can look at it and then show it to them as well.
Okay, I'm Greg Gillen with Larry Speaks and Associates. And Stephen Speaks, my partner, had been handling things, but he had some other business that he had to attend to today. So I'm here on his behalf and Mr. Davis's behalf.
Thank you, sir.
And since the last time, there's been some committee meetings, there's been some meetings with the neighborhood to discuss the issues at hand. And I'll just go over here, so maybe everybody can see it. And I'm gonna speak louder than I am. But at this point in time, the sketch plan that you've done has been revised to a residential section along here on the, uh, that would be the southeast quadrant of the intersection.
It'd be great. If you're sure if we could get him to...
Oh, yes, sir, I understand. Yeah, they got a television audience.
But we've set it up to where the southeast intersection of County Road Four and Jensen Road would be a small residential zone. And then the frontage along County Road Four on the southwest side would be a business-type zone. And then the rest would remain M1 through the majority of the property going back towards International Paper. And as I said, we've had several meetings, there's been some committee meetings, three-year counsel. The owner and Stephen and the community have gotten together a couple of times to go over these issues and discuss them. And I believe that we have a product that I think everybody basically needs to make a difference.
Thank you, sir. This is a public meeting, or a public hearing. The public is greatly encouraged to come speak and talk to us and give us your opinion. I ask that you sign in with the secretary. The public hearing is open. Please come down and voice your concerns, your questions, or any comments. And tell us who you are after you've signed in. If you've already signed in, that's great.
I already signed in.
Okay, tell us, we know who you are, but tell for the television audience who you are.
Okay, I'm Reverend Freddie Fox, pastor of Spring Hill Amizon Church.
Yes, sir.
Who sits in, the church sits in the middle of Spring Hill.
Yes.
So I come speaking on behalf of the church as well as the community. Since the inception of this, and we find out about it, we met with Mr. Davis. In fact, the plan that you have now is a result of meeting with him and looking at what would be best for the community and the best interest of the community. And the plan that is presented today is a plan that we are, in fact, we had him out to the church to meet with the community, so the community could see close up what the plan looked like. All questions was answered. The communities have no problem with the plan as it is drawn, because it does enhance the community. We were concerned about not taking away from the community, but adding to.
Yes.
In fact, the way that they've lined it up now adds to the community, gives the community more input in terms especially of commercial aspect of it. There are things that could be provided for the community that's not there now. So it's a plan that's workable. We sign off on it.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Does anybody else have any questions, concerns, or comments? Come on up. Have you signed in? You need, go ahead and sign in for us, so we know who you are.
I'm Bill Coffin. I live in Eufaula. And I own the property Frogmore, the historic farm Frogmore, which joins the Davis property on the west. And it's an exceedingly historic property. And I have some, I've just come from the Alabama Department of Archives and History, and there's Xerox for you all, pages from four books there at the Archives, which describe the Mac A. Smith owned the farm back in the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. And he was one of Prattville's most prominent citizens. In fact, there's a sketch of him in the Memorial Record of Alabama, which I have. And he also gave one of the elegies at Daniel Pratt's funeral, which I have, from the biography of Daniel Pratt, which includes Memorial Records and prominent citizens of Prattville. And also, he, there's a number of records of him in the Otoga County, The First Hundred Years, printed in nineteen seventy-two by Mr. Gray. And also, he's also in the newest history of the Otoga County. I assume it's the newest by Larry Noble's Two Thousand Old Otogo. Mac Smith was, contributed a number of articles in the Montgomery newspaper back in the late nineteenth century. And he's quoted in two of these county histories as giving the origin of the Otoga County, an old Indian name. And he, he was an attorney in Prattville. And he lived at his country place, Frogmore, which is the farm I own, which is mentioned in the memorial sketch of him in the Memorial Record of Alabama. And he, his family, his father, son were prominent. I think his father or grandfather was state treasurer of Alabama for many, many years. And he had a racetrack out there, which is also mentioned in the sketch of him in the Memorial Record of Alabama. And I know where his favorite horse, racehorse, was buried, which is very close to the Davis property. And the farm is very isolated at present. And the border with the Davis property is an old public road, which is no longer maintained as a public road. But it gives a very isolated, secluded feel. And I have no heirs. And I want to pass this prop, not the entire property of Frogmore, which now has two hundred forty-seven acres. In fact, I would like to sell or develop a portion of it myself, but not the portion where the house is, the old farmstead is, which joins the Davis property. I want to preserve that in perpetuity. And I've mentioned this to Tyrone Crowley of Prattville. And in fact, I've established a nonprofit corporation called the Laurel Look Heritage Foundation, which is primarily to preserve my properties down at Eufaula. But possibly, it could include this, but it would be best to, for someone locally, to take this over. It has on the property a very fine, early barn, late nineteenth-century barn, and some other old-out buildings. It's basically an old, late nineteenth-century farm complex. And I think it would be very, a great addition to Prattville and Otoga County's cultural and historic heritage. And obviously, Prattville's growing so fast, it needs some open space and developed land. I'm thinking about preserving for posterity, say, forty to a hundred and twenty acres. Something like from a fifth to a quarter, I mean, a half of what I have. And so I think this should be taken into serious consideration. And I did not receive notice of this meeting until yesterday. And so I think the decision should be postponed, taking into consideration the historic character of Frogmore and the, my desire to preserve it for posterity. And Mac Smith has many, many very fascinating things about him up here in the record. For instance, besides giving, I guess, the first printed account of the origin of the Otoga County, which is well-known back in the early days at least. He's very well-connected in the county. His brother, A.Y. Smith, and this is recorded in one of these histories, received the flag of the Prattville Dragoons when they went off to war. And it was his brother. And he was also the uncle by marriage of Governor Slaton of Georgia. His father, William Franklin Slaton, was born and raised at a place just down the road. Do y'all have any questions?
No, sir, I do not have any questions. I appreciate your concern.
I do feel like that whatever your decision is, that a strip of the, eastern, western strip of the property, the Davis property, should be set aside for an open space green strip. This is done in a lot of new developments these days. I know in Athens, Georgia, where I lived for many years, they have a requirement that new developments have to set aside a portion of the development for a green strip or undeveloped property. And that actually enhances the value of the property, because, you know, you have more clean air and you have a place for people to play or roam in the woods and see the natural beauty.
And the eastern side of your property, or the far eastern side of the property, is the part that you wish to preserve? Is it behind, or is it right here? That's the part that you'd want to develop, or the part that you want to preserve?
Do you have a map there that I can look at?
Yes, sir.
And while you're looking that over, what was your address again? Full address?
P.O. Box ten twenty-eight Eufaula, three six oh seven two. Let's see, my orientation here. I assume this, the proposal for the rezoning of the Davis property includes all the Davis properties, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This would be, this would be the boundary then between the Davis property and my property, the old historic farm Frogmore.
And you're, um...
Yes, sir. It's also a house on the property, it's my grandparents' house. It was built in nineteen thirty. It was built by my great-uncle, William Howard Reynolds. And so it's eighty-five years old, so it would be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. But more important than the house, actually, others, I don't think others had a store, because I drew up there with my grandparents and all, but it is. But the farm complex is more historic, I feel like, than the house, because it's older and you find very few farm complexes remaining. And particularly the barns, very fine early barns, you found very few early nineteenth-century barns surviving. And there's an old road, an old dirt road, it used to be a public road, that separates the Davis property and my property, Frogmore. And it used to go on down to, where my grandfather's best cotton land was where Union Camp Paper Mill is now the main plant.
But the main, my questioning is, you wish to develop some of this property, but the property that you don't, on the west side? That's what I wanted to know.
And donate to some organization that would preserve the old farm complex of Frogmore, but enough land to preserve its integrity, so it wouldn't have, you know, integrated all and pinching upon it, like forty to a hundred and twenty acres.
Okay.
That's all on the east side.
Okay.
And so what I'm saying is, to preserve that character, there needs to be, at a minimum, a strip of the developed land along the property, along that old roadway.
Gotcha. I understand. I completely understand. Thank you.
But it, you know, so...
I understand. I got it.
So, just yesterday, I just learned about this, so there's...
Yes, sir.
I think the best thing would actually be to postpone this decision to investigate all of this.
Yes, sir.
And this is, um...
I'll take that under consideration.
Five copies I've made are...
That's fine.
More than five of y'all.
Yes, sir. Okay.
That's a copy of those two books that I referenced.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will get these to, thank you, sir. All right. Is there any other questions, concerns, comments from anyone here? All right, the public hearing portion of this meeting is now closed. That doesn't mean anybody move, y'all stay right here. We're just closing the public hearing portion. Mr. Duke?
All right, let's, if you will indulge me just a second, we'll back up instead of going forward.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're all on the record about how we arrived today. We began this discussion back in May. At your May meeting, you received a petition from the Davis family to rezone the same property that we're talking about today as all M1. That decision after a public hearing, that request after a public hearing was sent to committee. The committee met first of June, before the June meeting, and basically asked that the Davises go back and look at possibly a sketch plan for the whole property. The reason being is that it's a large piece of property, two hundred, two hundred and thirty acres. And the committee wanted to know, okay, how would that, how might that be divided up? The other concern, based on comments of the initial public hearing and a community meeting, was, you know, how does it affect Spring Hill neighborhood? And how might you come up with a scheme that doesn't necessarily put M1 zoning right up against residential? So the Davises went basically a month, came back first of July, met with the subcommittee again, and presented the plan that you're looking at today. It's a sketch plan, which you also have that on your agenda to deal with as a separate resolution. And also, the zoning scheme that puts B1 on the southwest corner and R3 on the southeast corner. And then the rest of the property, the M1. That proposal was read as a substitute resolution at your August meeting and then set for public hearing today. So that's how we've arrived here. So in essence, this is the second public hearing on the same property, a different proposal. So we're really gonna talk about the property and the concerns that, and not really concerns, they're just kind of outstanding issues that don't necessarily have to be solved today, they just need to be put out on the table. By and large, the proposals before you is probably a good mix of a, an area that doesn't fit well into one category. The area is, as far as land use was concerned, it was kind of changed dramatically when IP was put there back in the sixties. And we covered that in the first public hearing. With IP being there at the end of Jensen Road, and of course, Jensen Road being put through the area, industry, heavy industry was introduced, and kind of comes in conflict, to some extent, with a residential neighborhood. So what we're really looking at today is trying to maximize the property owner's use of his property where we can, but also protecting the overall public by making sure that if we allow additional industry out there, it's mitigated in some way. I think the primary way that is handled through the sketch plan is by the introduction of a central road. And that's primarily the reason y'all have the larger copies, is so that you can see that road that picks up at Eklund Boulevard, which is, Eklund Boulevard is in the, in the city's existing west industrial park. If you know where Fraz Lee Corporation is located, and those of you who've been here a long time, that's been several different entities, from Haldex to Fraz Lee to many others. But that road comes back and connects to Alabama fourteen. So that's a major thoroughfare that it connects to. The Davises are proposing to connect a central street there to the end of Eklund Boulevard, where it hits County Road Four, bring it south into the property, and then turn it roughly a thousand, fifteen hundred feet in, turn it east-west. It would intersect Jensen Road and then proceed further to the east and intersect their east property line and line up with what would be an extension of GNS Road. That's an existing industrial area there off of Washington Ferry. What that central road does, now, this is, they're not proposing to build that today, but laying out that road and basically agreeing to protect it, or telling the city this is the way we would like to see the property developed, that lets us know that we have some other route besides Jensen Road and Washington Ferry Road to move potential traffic in and out of the neighborhood. As we have discussed many times, especially looking at the sketch plan stage, the more routes we give a driver, the more choices you give a driver, the less opportunities you have for congesting one road. If you, it's simple, if you provide one road in, you're gonna have congestion. It's just the way it works out. So the more pathways you have in and out of this area, the better off you're gonna be. You're not going to see as great an impact on Jensen Road as you might have if it continued to be the only way into this industrial area. Be glad to answer any questions at this point.
Yes, sir, go right ahead, I'm sorry. If you wouldn't mind, this might be bouncing around a little bit, but you, I know you mentioned earlier that you had not received notification. Can you just let everybody know about that before we move on? And I guess too, if you wouldn't mind, you've heard the gentleman's comments, if you have any comments on that before, his comments before we move forward.
Yeah, yes, sir, I'll try to deal with both of those. Mr. Coffin, it's, I've got an address of Evelyn R. Coffin, is that...
She is my mother, she's deceased.
Okay. But we send notices to how it's listed in the tax office. The first one for the first public hearing in May was returned, unclaimed. And then, of course, the other one was sent out. We have not received a card back from it saying that it was received, but it was sent out along with all the other notices. So proper notice as required was sent out. How soon that gets delivered, we don't have any control over that part. But the proper notice was sent.
But we're covered there.
Yes, sir, I mean, we've done as required by statute.
Okay. Any other question? Go ahead.
But that certainly doesn't minimize Mr. Coffin's concerns. Certainly, that's something we need to take into account. Now, the property he's talking about is just like this piece today, is out of the city limits. There's no zoning control over that property, just like there's no zoning control over this property. So that is important information that you need to take into account. Sorry.
Can you repeat that?
Mr. Coffin's property is also out of the city limits. This property that we're talking about today is out of the city limits, although they have made application to be in the city limits. So neither of these two properties is zoned. The historic nature of that piece of property probably needs to be explored. It certainly needs to be taken into account as the Davis property is developed and also as the Coffin property is developed, needs to be taken into account. I'm not sure that it has a tremendous impact on whether you zone the property for industry at this point. As he stated, International Paper has been on what was a portion of that historic farm for many years. So there has already been impact. But I think it's worth looking into, how do you preserve whatever is the most historic pieces of that property? And to be honest with you, Mayor, I'd have to look a lot further at what's going on here. But I'm not sure that's a sufficient reason to stop consideration today. The commission may have a different opinion on that.
Yes.
A question about process.
Sir.
In terms of, you know, our, we make recommendations to the city council in terms of zoning. And they won't consider it until the annexation is done. Is that correct? Am I...
It used to be the way it had to take place, but you're now, since two thousand nine, you're permitted to pre-zone property. As long as the annexation is completed within a hundred, a hundred and eighty days of that. Let's say that the council went ahead and they adopted the zoning scheme. Then they have a hundred and eighty days to complete the annexation and then apply that zoning to the annexed property. If they didn't complete it in a hundred and eighty days, then that zoning approval would be invalid. Now, you have to have a property that's actively under consideration for annexation. And this property meets that, they have a petition pending before the city for that. So to answer your question, the council could choose to wait on the annexation, or they could go ahead and approve it contingent upon the annexation. You still have to just wait, but now you can do the other.
Okay.
And I think the primary reason for that change was that a lot of development decisions are contingent upon zoning approval and oftentimes contingent upon annexing into the adjacent cities. So, but also those contingencies are something that people don't want to commit to buying the property unless they can get it. So legislators set that up. It's not a bad way to go, but it doesn't force anybody's hand. The council can wait if they want to. And like you said, you're just making a recommendation. If it moves out of the Planning Commission today with a recommendation, one way or the other, it's gonna come before the city council for them to take it up. They don't have to take your recommendation, they can substitute their own.
Any other questions for Mr. Duke? All right, go ahead.
From a planning perspective, there's no reason we shouldn't proceed with this. That's what I heard, I believe.
I think what you've got is, you have a property owner who recognized that there were some issues with the neighborhood. You've got what I consider to be a very good approach to trying to screen that off. The committee will tell you, we looked at whether or not even a small band of residential might work in that southwest corner. And the long, I seemed to like it during the committee meeting, but I must tell you, the longer I got away from it, the less I liked it, because it seemed less likely that somebody would do that. I think there is a potential for some business. Spring Hill neighborhood needs some kind of commercial node, possibly. And if you end up with additional manufacturing uses out here, then that's probably something that can be supported. And that's a good way of separating the manufacturing, which we're talking about light manufacturing, we're not talking about IP level of manufacturing on this property. More like what you see on Washington Ferry Road than what you see at IP, is what you're looking at for the uses on this property.
If, if, we approve it today and this is zoned, the property near him is zoned M1, would it be revisited if somebody comes in and brings in a business? Would that be something that you would look at? And perhaps there could be a buffer zone amended in at that time?
Let's just say that part or all of the eighty-one acres that's shown on this map is parcelated. That's how that piece... shown on this map is parcel A, that's how that piece exists today.
Right.
Let's say that it was zoned M-one, then, and it was developed, then the city ordinance requires a minimum of a twenty-foot buffer basically between that and the adjacent property. That, that is, that is all that is required. Now, oftentimes what we see is if that happened to be a, a drainage way, um, which might be the case, since he mentioned a road being there, um, sometimes that's used for detention. There are other, there are ways in the development review process to create a, a deeper buffer. And the city certainly has interest in protecting historic properties, uh, certainly historic, historically agricultural properties, that's cer, that is certainly the city's and the county's heritage, uh, that, that's certainly something we would look at. But there's nothing in the city ordinance that actually requires it at the moment.
I think it's gonna be a little bit of a repeat question, but at this time, you've got the zoning laid out and you've got the zoning M-one over on that side with the, with the property where, where the, uh, the house and the, the barns and stuff are. What would pre, how could you do anything be, besides zoning it M-one or whatever, to actually build a buffer there to do that? Is there any way, any process that can make that happen that we have control over?
Well, it's, I think I may even have said something like this to the mayor today, there's certainly nothing that precludes us asking for that. Uh, you could, you could choose to zone it something of a lesser designation. Uh, you, you want to be careful that if you zone it something less, it's, it's a, it's a configuration that is something that might legitimately be built on because otherwise you're, you're limiting the use of that property. You may call it, say, R-one, R-two, or something like that, but unless that's something that can be built on, then there's, there's some question about whether or not they can, can use the property. So, um, you can, you can delay the zoning until you have questions answered. Uh, you could pass it along with a recommendation that the city council look further at that before they take action. And there, there's several different ways to go about this. Um, you could split up your approval of this property. It's kind of what I said to the senior of the mayor, if you feel like that's an important, enough of a consideration, then you can, you can certainly delay action here. Um, i- it's, it's my opinion that that's something that we will continue to try to understand and work out, but I don't think that's going to change the, the proper use of this property. And, and that, that's really set not by trying to change the, the designation in this area. You have industrial uses all through this property, I mean, all through this region. The city has established a west industrial park. The Davis property lines up very well with it. Just to the south of it is a very intense industrial use with International Paper. So, the, the M-one fits the area. The biggest concern from, from a planning standpoint has been traffic management and protecting the Spring Hill neighborhood. And I think we, we've done a lot towards accomplishing that.
Thank you. Any other question?
Mr. Smith, I have.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Another thing we need to look at, and this is just for the, the commission to be aware, um, the city subdivision regulations only considers it to be a subdivision of property if it's, if any piece of the division is less than five acres. So if, if there were a division of property that was, um, anything greater than five acres, even just a six-acre parcel, uh, they would not have to come before you for subdivision approval. Even though you've given them a sketch plan approval or you're considering a sketch plan and you, say you approve that today, they don't have to come back before you for a division that's, that's less, that's greater than five acres. With that being said, there's no good mechanism at this point to protect this corridor that we've laid out. So that's the only caution I'm giving today, and if, you may want to, to, to look at that And I think it's important to preserve this particular corridor, to make these, these intersection connections. If you, if you don't make these intersection connections with Eklund Boulevard or line up with GNS Road, then the benefit of this central roadway is diminished greatly. So that's the only thing I would bring up to you. Now, that's, on a, on a bigger level, that's solved by changing regulations, which we've talked about at various times, but have not ever acted on.
But there's nothing we could do about that today anyway, is there?
No, and then you have to kind of gauge for yourself, how soon would this property develop and how big a threat is that? And I, I'm not sure that it's a great one, but it's something you need to be aware of.
Okay. But approving parcel, there is two parcels that we have here, parcel A and parcel B, of which it can be divided if somebody wanted it to propose it.
Yes, sir, they, you actually have three different parcels that make...
Parcel C, okay.
You have two on the, the west side of Jensen Road and one there on the east.
Right. I see it now. Parcel three, I got it. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Duke? Comments? Discussion? We've already read this in, so I don't believe we need to read it in. We can, um, move on to a vote, or if somebody wants to discuss it, we will discuss it. Yes? It's already been read in, we do not need to read it in again. Okay. All in favor of approving this signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, like sign. Let's look on to the next one. It is the sketch plan for the Horace Davis properties. We've just kind of done these together, but, um, would you mind reading that in for me? Uh, Roy?
Be happy to. Resolution, sketch plan, Davis property, September seventeen, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas Horace Davis and the state of Tommy F. Davis are the owners of Davis property, and whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits on Jensen Road and County Road four east, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed sketch plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted sketch plan of Davis property. So moved. Much, Chairman?
Thank you, we got a motion and a second. Does anybody wish to discuss it, being that we've done that for a little while now? Any discussion?
I have a question for Mr. Davis is, 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 does he have any immediate prospects? I know he can, he, he may or may not be able to answer that, but just a question.
Uh, I can say I've had two, two inquiries into it. I do not have any, any offer on it, if this, if this, uh, look uncorrected.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all in favor of the sketch plan signify by raising your right hand? Opposed, like sign. Now, the next one, uh, discussed with Mr. Duke, and, um, it is to be removed. Mr. Hyman, do you, can you make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we remove item number three from the agenda.
All right. Thank you, there's been a motion and a second to remove item number three. If you look on there, uh, there's an explanation of why. Uh, all in favor of removing it signify by raising your right hand? Thank you. Now, is there any, um, miscellaneous business? Anything from anyone here? Meeting adjourned.